Good afternoon, everyone. We're going to go ahead and get started with our FY26 budget deliberations. Today's date is June 18, 2025. The time is 2:00 PM. In attendance are Commissioners Eberlein, Duncan, and Matarri. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. Public comment? Hearing none. Our first business item is FY26 budget briefing, including a budget for personnel expenses. But before we start that, I have a quick statement I'd like to make. I'd like to give credit where credit is due. For more than a year now, I have said, "Don't tell me, show me what your needs are for money," especially when it comes to personnel. This was done two years ago when I worked with the sheriff. I spent countless hours at the sheriff's office compiling cost data for recruiting and training a deputy. We analyzed the number of deputies hired in a given time period and how many were still with the office after five years. And we were able to articulate numerically that it was costing the county over $3 million in evaporated expenses for training and recruiting because these deputies didn't, they resigned within the first five years. And I again talked about this a year ago, where the board is often asked for staff anecdotally and not through numerical metrics. And so I really want to give credit to where credit is due. This budget cycle, so far the clerk and the assessor gave us really nice presentations. And the assessor actually went above and beyond. They gave us a booklet afterwards. And I hate to do this because, you know, not everyone can see this, but you know, one of the things that they did that I really appreciated was they gave us a chart that showed us. The red is that we have 3,482 properties being assessed by each employee in the assessor's department. And they want to get down to the 2,800 to 3,000 range. And so that gives you a sense as to what the challenges are in that department. And then they also just kind of included a map of the states by region that just talks about what the average is. And for our region, which is Idaho, Montana, all the way down to Arizona, New Mexico, the average number of properties an assessor assesses is 1,635 in a year. Now, we had some questions during that presentation, and the assessor was kind enough to follow up on it. And I just have some copies here. I know each of you were copied on this. But they gave us some charts, which we asked for. I'm sure you all can read that. That's pretty much what the board got in one of the presentations. And so I'm appreciative of that. And sometimes, you know, it comes across, and this is really my conversation is to the board, that, you know, we are, this is an unusual ask. And the fact is, it's not. It's not throughout the state of Idaho. You know, Blaine County, elected official puts together a presentation, Canyon, Canyon. It's very common for this stuff to happen. There's one in Blaine County especially that stood out to me. And I want to give each of you a copy of this. And you could go to that PDF if you would please. It's a really nice presentation, but I want to go right to page 13 because on the bottom it talks about community connectivity, and it's got a little pie chart of the total number of social media posts done. In 2024, we made 1,270 posts, our highest number ever, considering 58% were public safety messages, 19% were community connectivity messages, 12% were service messages, and 11%, believe it or not, were recruiting messages. And if you could scroll down just a little bit to the next page, you know, you have a total number of social media followers. In 2015, they had about 2,500. And as of this year, they're just under 40,000. The thing that stands out the most is that in this particular county, this elected official resides in a county with 25,000 people in it. And they can put together a nice booklet that has a budget summary, has pictures of what people are doing, even gets into contract cities, and segments that out. And so, you know, the reason I bring this up is because if leadership in this county, if they need money for something, I'm a big advocate for it. I will support it, okay? But if it requires the board to raise taxes, then all I ask is that you be well-prepared to illustrate why you need the money. I will support it, but you must be willing to illustrate that. Otherwise, this board is tasked with raising taxes, and if it can't be articulated to us, it's very difficult for it to be articulated to the community. And so, you know, these presentations are not about showing respect to us individuals as commissioners or even this board. It's about showing respect to the county taxpayers and making a clear and cogent argument why money is needed, where that money will go, and how it's being used, and how it's worked in the previous years. If you pay attention to what some of these other elected officials have covered, they go into great detail about even previous years. We were given X dollars, and here's what you got for that money. And so I just want to emphasize that I think it's time that Kootenay County step up to the plate and we start providing legitimate budget presentations for the citizens. And if anyone after this meeting would like to get a copy, I have a few extra booklets. I'm happy to give them out. And so with that said, I'd like to give it to you, Brandy, and respectfully ask if we can start with Director Snyder because he does have another commitment. After you, do your opening.
Sure. I was going to let Lexi from HR go first, but if we want to have Nick.
If that's okay with this board?
Yep, we can do that.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Commissioners. I'll be brief. I know you have a lot to cover. Brandy, may I ask? Thank you. Slide two there. Thanks, Brandy. Commissioners, I did a presentation with Board of County Commissioners with some metrics. The full metrics set at earlier meetings, so I'm just going to retouch on a couple of things with regard to our FTE request. So to that end, when I started in 2006, you can see the population. We had about 94,000 people. We had five field maintenance people at that time. As you can see, our number is just under 180,000, give or take is the increase. Roughly an 89% increase in population that the same field staff, i.e. park rangers, are serving. That does include administrative staff as well, handling the same number of people. So with that said, this is the first time the department has presented a request to the Board of County Commissioners for a full-time employee in the 18 years I've served Kootenay County. Notably, the department reduced the number of full-time and part-time employees some years ago following a comprehensive evaluation of department responsibilities, available funding sources, and programs that were offered. With the blessing of the Board of County Commissioners those years ago, the department undertook a reorganization which merged our staff responsibilities, retired some antiquated programs that we had offered, and joined three separate departments into a single department. Those efforts to combine those resources and staff resulted in a more efficient, cohesive department that saved taxpayers a significant amount of salary savings over the past approximately six years. However, that unprecedented growth we've experienced the past few years has simply outmatched our ability to operate and maintain the same level of service with the same number of staff. Simply stated, we've reached a point where our efficiency and the hard work of our staff is overwhelmed by the sheer volume of growth throughout Kootenay County, as you can see here. And then, Brandy, would you go to slide six, please? And Commissioners, this is a depiction of where we should be in staff levels. These numbers were not compiled by me. This is the National Recreation and Parks Association summary of a study they did in 2025, which depicts where we fit in comparison to the national average. If I can draw your attention to the orange, the orange is 100 to 250,000 population. The median size of the staff for that size of an agency is 120 employees. I have eight. If you looked at the lower quartile, that is 61. So even if we reduce that number by 2/3, because we are not a city, we're a county, we don't have the same level of amenities in our city parks, still we would be somewhere near 20 employees. We have eight, again, Commissioners. So that's just the quick, so the Commissioners can move on with your meeting. But it's worth mentioning that drive times have increased, our citations have increased, our calls for service, all those things along with population, which has doubled, has also almost doubled our workload. Our staff cannot get any more efficient, Commissioners. They can't even take a day off between Memorial and Labor Day weekend. It's so busy. So with that said, we understand that a full-time position is a huge ask. We don't come with this request lightly. We understand the challenges the board has in funding all the requests. We just want to bring it forward. If you're able to fund it, we appreciate it. If not, we'll continue to serve the citizens the best we can, but those are the facts. We have an extremely, an extreme increase in our workload. We would ask for some assistance if it's at all possible. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer it.
Thank you. Any questions? No? Thank you so much. This is very helpful. I appreciate it.
All right. Brandy Falcone for the record. I'm going to hand it over to Lexi from HR. She, I believe, is going to go through some comp study things.
Thanks, Brandy. Lexi Pack for the record from HR. HR is prepared to give our recommendations based on the FY26 comp analysis completed by Thompson Consulting Group. This information was presented to the Board of County Commissioners at the 5:15 HR meeting. Are there any questions or thoughts before I get started?
Any questions? No? Go ahead.
Okay. I do have a couple of handouts for you, just to follow along. Most of this information you guys already have, but... So I have broken it up into three separate areas. One area I would call critical, one I would call moderate, and one I would call optional. As far as this data, it is all based on 2025, so I would give the recommendation that we do need to age this data in order to get it ready for 2026. We are seeing about a 2.5%, 2% to 3%, so I'd say 2.5% aging of the data would be the best for this study. So to start off, I'll just go from top to bottom. Juvenile detention officers, they did come in below market. We are also having a really hard time recruiting for this position. And we're not getting qualified applicants. I believe for the whole year, we've got about 20 in total. So for us, this is a pretty critical position that we would recommend changing the current grade. It is a current seven, and we would propose it move to an eight. Want me to just keep going?
Do you know how many open positions there are?
I don't know if I have the current number. I think there's been two turnovers for the year.
I think that they're...
I think that they're hiring their last one. So they either have one open position or they're... I think one.
Yeah, I see one right now. Want me to continue?
Yes, I was just curious.
My next big suggestion would be for our deputy prosecuting attorney. This position came in a lot lower than what market was, so I would give a recommendation of about a 4% adjustment to the whole attorney pay plan. Again, we are not getting qualified applicants in this position as well. For the whole year, I think I had eight applicants, and five of them met the qualifications. Right now, I think we have four and a half technical openings.
I thought we were filling up in the criminal side.
Stan?
I'm kind of surprised to hear this. I mean, I know there's been some turnover, but that's different than not being able to hire anybody.
Stan Mortensen for the record. We are short, I think, five right now on paper. We have one starting in a few months. And, but we've lost six people in the last 12 months. We're trying to hire them as fast as we're losing them. We are losing them to some higher-paying positions. We've had two, three of our, three of those six have become judges in the last 12 months. One became the new Post Falls City Prosecutor. And so we're losing them to some, you know, better paying and just higher positions. It's just out of my control. And so we are getting some applicants. We are being very, very selective with who we pick. I will say that. But we, we're getting more applications than we have in the last few years, but not as many as we used to. So I don't think it's quite as simple as saying we're not getting quality applicants. We're just getting fewer, and we are being selective.
Yeah, but we're not losing people to judge positions because that's just the, you know, that's, I'm going there because I'm getting paid more. That's a career move. I mean, you're not suggesting we equal the pay to a judge, right?
Not necessarily, no. I mean, my people are always going to put in for those positions, not just because it's a career move, it is also more money. It's not just a career move, but you're right.
Okay. Okay.
We have lost three to private practice. They're making more money there as well, so.
But we know that, though. We know that private practice pays more.
They're always going to.
It's not as steady sometimes, depending on what you do, but...
I don't know that this wage survey took private practice into consideration, though.
It didn't.
Yeah, okay.
So of the market that the board did decide on, we are the lowest paid of all of them for the prosecuting attorney position, too. So we're the lowest paid of the market. Is that, wait? Is that what you were asking? So the next portion would be along with that, our chief deputy, sorry, our chief deputy prosecutor. Along the same lines, it's the next page of the packet I gave you guys. Again, this is just from the study. But we, again, are substantially behind. The only market that we did consider that was paying less than us was Bonner County, but about 15% behind. So I'd recommend at least to stay competitive. That whole adjustment of the attorney pay plan, 4%, would just include this as well.
Were any of these midpoint spot checked on their matrices?
I did not do any checking of this information. We paid our consultant to do that. I mean, we didn't. I'm trusting that the information I received was accurate.
Okay, well, we'll talk about some of these positions afterwards, but you're in your presentation, so thank you.
So along with that, if we were to adjust the full attorney pay plan, it would also impact the civil deputy prosecuting attorneys and the judicial staff attorneys if we went with my recommendation. So that's why those ones are in red. They would be a supplemental change. So those would be my critical recommendations from the findings of the comp study. Moving on to the more moderate, a big chunk of these are going to be KCSO. Fortunately, we did okay. As far as patrol and detention deputies, detention actually came in at market, and patrol came in consistently at our 3%. We want to be within 3% of Portaleine, and we were able to maintain that. So at this time, I would not make any recommendations for those. Our command staff, on the other hand, is substantially behind. You can see on all of those, it is significant, mainly because of Spokane, though. That's going to be our biggest competitor, just because they're paying astronomically compared to what we are. But again, if we look at Portaleine, Post Falls, our immediate competition, I mean, local competition, my suggestion would be about a 3.5% adjustment. We're kind of doing a balancing act with this one. We don't want to get too far behind, but we are not losing our command staff right now.
Can you just, can you make a note of that? And we'll just let her, just... I'm curious, though, is this, is this weighted? This is a weighted average, right? Like these percentages, the percent difference, or overall market average is weighted?
Well, compared to them, I mean, it's the overall market average.
Yeah.
And then it does break it down individually. Like, if we look at lieutenants, Portaleine, and this is at market, we're not looking at our entry point. At market, Portaleine's 9% above, Post Falls is 2% above us.
Okay.
And then if we continue on, like captains, overall market, 15%. But again, if we are looking at Post Falls and Portaleine, Post Falls 9%, Portaleine 4%. And this is just market. This isn't the entry. Again, undersheriff, kind of the same theme. Spokane is paying significantly more. We looked at Ada, Bonner, and Canyon, and we are overall 21% behind for that one, so.
Sheriff, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I guess my question is for HR. Do we want a law enforcement agency where our best and brightest don't see upward incentives to promote? Or do we want to have that upward mobility and have vacancies and be in that cycle that we were at one time?
Yeah, so patrol to sergeants are still at the max to men, getting a 10% increase. So they are still getting something. And I think that's part of this balancing act of we don't want to get too far behind, but we can only be so competitive with Spokane. But these are just my recommendations the board can choose to accept or adjust those from there.
Because if we don't stay competitive with our local market, I can guarantee you our A players will be leaving the organization and going to these other organizations because of sergeant, lieutenant, and captain pay significantly higher.
So when I did pull the reports, we've only lost two sergeants in the last 24 months, and...
I'm talking about if we don't stay competitive, our best and brightest will likely leave because they are promotion-driven, and if they don't see the same level of commitment and dedication, they'll likely go somewhere else.
I'm not hearing HR saying that they're not recommending increases, so I'm not sure.
Well, I believe we'd like to confer with HR to see if their recommendations will keep us competitive.
From what I've evaluated, compared to Portaleine and Post Falls, I do believe that a 3.5% adjustment for command staff would keep us relatively competitive, yes.
Did you have anything else, Sheriff?
No.
Go ahead, Lexi.
Okay. So that would be overall for the KCSO. As far as the next moderate level I would look at would be our district court, our court services director. It did come in below market. Its current step, or sorry, current grade is a 14. I would recommend it go to a 15. This would align it internally. Most of our directors are at that 15 and 16 level. This is our only director-level position out of 14. And then moving on to, these are what I would consider optional. Whatever the board has insight on and thoughts, mainly driven by recruiting, openings, things like that. District court, so we have a record supervisor. This current grade is a seven. We could propose it to an eight. Spokane substantially impacts this market. They're about 20% above. However, everyone else is relatively close. So I think it would just be something to consider for the board. If we did make that change, I would also recommend that we adjust the criminal supervisor and civil supervisor to maintain that internal alignment. And then the last one was our recording specialist. So this one, again, did come in below market. However, this is probably one of our most popular jobs when we have a recruitment. We get significant applicants for this position, so again, kind of whatever our compensation motto would want to be for that. But if we adjusted this grade, they're currently a four, a five would get them to closer to market. We would also have to adjust the lead recording and the supervisor because of how vertical their org chart is. And when I say we're getting applicants for this position, it's not just repeat of the same people. There are a few repeats, but when we look at the qualifications on a minimum standard, this position's asking for a high school education. I believe when I pulled it, we had 11 people with associates apply, 15 with bachelors, five with masters, and a doctorate. So we're having a good number of qualified people. I know that one concern for this position specifically is we get people in there, but we don't keep them necessarily. It's kind of an entryway into the county, and then they will transfer out to other positions. But I did talk to a couple of the commissioners, and it's not always a bad thing. It's sometimes good to have an entryway into the county. It makes it difficult for the department in training and retaining, and it can be frustrating, but we're also getting employees there, so. Overall, those were the findings from the comp study.
Do you have any questions? No? Sure.
Kevin Smart for the record. Can I ask one question of HR? Were those comparisons for the sheriff's office, are those matrix to matrix? are those matrix-to-matrix comparisons only?
Yes.
Do they include anything of longevity?
Not as far as I'm aware.
Okay, so commissioners, that's, that's what I think that we're kind of talking about, we're talking apples to oranges. We do need some minor matrix adjustments, but it's the longevity pay where we start to become very imbalanced with those other agencies. And I believe I, I sent a chart through, I believe it got to the commissioners as well. Those are the numbers we're talking about as well, so we're talking about two fronts here, and I think what we need to probably do is, is allow the sheriff's office and HR to get together and look at possibly redrafting something that gets us more in line with what other agencies do. Matrixes across the board aren't the same even. What ours looks like doesn't look like Coeur d'Alene cities. They've got a mid, medium, and a max. Well, we've got a five-year matrix. Those don't really align very well when you're talking about what's it take to get from one step to another in Coeur d'Alene. Ours is very clear, but their staff is getting paid these weird numbers in between that we can't account for on some of those, particularly Post Falls, as they're all over the board on a mid, medium, and max, and you can't nail down of what they attach those to. So that's why when I ran those numbers, I ran those numbers on averages for the agency, for, for the years of service that people are in, in comparison to us. Trying to paint the, a different picture of, yes, these matrices look similar, but in true reality, this is where agencies are getting paid compared to what we are at our agency. So maybe that's, maybe that's our request, is to try to say, can we take a step back with HR and try to say, we got to maneuver a little differently. I think, you know, the commissioners in the past have said, we want to do this right. I don't know that we have. We pushed on the amoeba and a different part popped out the other side. And I don't think we fully solved what it is to be fully competitive and allow us to go in line. When those agencies make a move, that allows us to make a similar move to keep competitive. We're always trying to push in one spot to get close, but it comes at a cost of truly nailing something down as, this is a consistent model that we can carry forward year to year when adjustments need to be made.
So before you gave the board of commissioners this handout, did you, did you run it by HR?
No, I did not. Again, that came to the spur of the moment of, hey, we're, you know, this is coming up, these meetings are moving fast. So the information flew to me. I started just throwing it together in a spreadsheet and presented of, hey, this is what I believe the findings are. We haven't had a chance to do anything like that, so we'd certainly love to be able to maybe step forward and say, hey, can we try to, to make that happen?
Robert Norris, but also, we've also been told and seen in meetings that HR will only take direction from the board, not from each, each office.
Well, look, in, in an effort to keep this meeting, meeting moving along, because there's a lot of content today, I am always open if your office wants to illustrate and show us, not tell, but show. I'm happy to entertain that. If the board wants, is happy with just being told, that's fine, too. But, you know, I, I have some questions about this study. Because when you look at like a court services director, and we've been going through this, right? You know, I asked if you'd spot-checked anything. Well, a few of these positions were spot-checked. And when you look at a court services director, they include Spokane Valley, Spokane, Post Falls, Coeur d'Alene, and Boise, which generally doesn't do court-type functions, but they're listed in here.
So this information was, I mean, every individual position does state the source of where the information came from. A lot of them did come from the Economic Research Institute.
Well, I understand that.
Okay.
Okay, but I'm just, you know, the jobs, generally, they line up. They should line up, and I don't think Coeur d'Alene offers a court services director.
So they also have a tool that allows you to have a ratio. They can compare two positions. If fifty percent of this position is accurate and fifty percent of this position is accurate, they can create these custom positions with that ERI tool that they do have. We don't currently have a subscription to ERI, so I can't confirm where that information came from.
Okay.
But our consultant does use them, and they've been around for about thirty years.
Well, if you go to the Bonner County one, it says that the midpoint is a hundred and five thousand. But if you look in their matrix, the midpoint is ninety-six thousand, four seventy.
Again, I cannot confirm the information.
I understand that, but my point is that without spot-checking it, we're, we're making potentially multimillion-dollar decisions, and we have to make sure it's right. I mean, that's really what it ultimately comes down to. I have the same situation with the deputy coroner. Their midpoint in the report is sixty-four thousand, two eleven. If you go to Canyon County's matrix, their midpoint is fifty-four thousand, one twenty-one. It's pretty significant. And then if you look at the chief deputy clerk, they're all graded as a CD four. For the treasurer's office, one oh four, eight fifty-two. You know, for the assessor's office, one oh four, eight fifty-two. For the clerk's office, one eighteen. Same grade. So, you know, my concern is that we're being asked to evaluate something that really doesn't kind of add up with reality from a spot check. And I realize that that's what they're supposed to do, but it doesn't mean that it's right. It just means that's what they're supposed to do, and clearly, they probably didn't spot-check it. So I would definitely take issue with them and what they provided, or at least figure out why they, how they come up with these numbers. If the matrices off their, the other county websites don't even support where these numbers are coming from. So I'm okay with doing what's right for people, but I'm not okay with making a decision based upon a report that apparently seems to have some flaws in it that I don't understand why they're there. And then the only other question I have is, was a financial impact done with any of these recommendations?
No, I was waiting until I got your guys' opinion on things. I just didn't want Brandy and Arrow to have to make all of these before.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you.
Commissioner Matarri, can I also ask, what more would you want to see from us then on just this topic? You know, you've said again, show me. We created a spreadsheet with documentation of...
I'll give you a copy of this. This will be a good start for you.
Okay, so for just a, a, a minor part of a pay matrix thing, an Excel spreadsheet's not enough to say?
You know, I, I'm happy to sit down. I mean, look, we have this meeting. I, I'm happy to talk with you offline. I've spent countless hours with the sheriff's office on trying to figure out how to properly get the deputies paid, and I'm happy to do that with you, okay? But just right now, I don't think I can answer that for you without having a better understanding of what you're asking for.
Can I ask what direction you would like from HR at this point in regards to the comp study?
Commissioner Duncan, Eberline?
Try to find it, maybe grab it or something?
Well, what should we tell Lexi?
I don't know what we're going to tell Lexi.
Yeah, I think we need to validate some of these positions.
At this point, the study's completed. We've paid the bill. She's presented it. I mean, this, yesterday was the first I heard that any commissioners had any concerns over the validity of the study.
So when you say validate, like, are you talking all hundred positions that were looked at, or only the ones that are on the recommendation table?
Well, I mean, we, we have to make sure that it's correct. So, you know, if we have a few that are not correct, then we probably should, you know, figure out if the ones we're talking about are correct. That's the first thing. Second thing is that when this salary study was brought before us, it was stated explicitly that the job descriptions have not been updated, that the job descriptions were not updated, and what we were trying to do is get a snapshot of a before and a today and see what the difference was with those jobs. Because I don't believe any elected officials had the opportunity to review the job descriptions that were sent for this study to be done.
So we did get a presentation on how many of the job descriptions had been updated in the last two or three years, I think it was, at one point.
I can't remember exactly, but electeds and department heads have the opportunity to update job descriptions at any point. And I know that we did go over exactly, and I can find those numbers for how many, but a substantial amount of the job descriptions had been updated in the last five years.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we do have an option to... And then we can go based off HR's recommendations on some of the stuff they already did, open positions and...
Well, look, if you want to add this and get a financial impact so that we can add this to the bottom line, go ahead. I'm okay with you wanting to do that, you know, but we don't even know what we're talking about here. And so we have two, two variables. How much more is it going to add to the bottom line here? Right? I mean, yourself and Commissioner Eberline said start with a zero percent increase. I don't know how that's going to happen with all these asks and then adding this on top of it.
Oh, I hear you.
But if you want to do it, I say let's go ahead and pile it on, and I'm happy to watch the machetes come out. But I, I would like to first start...
I suggested, I, I asked if you wanted to reject this study, and then you put it that I wanted to add it to the deficit. So I don't know where you want to...
I want to make sure that it's accurate. If it's accurate, then it's something that's useful. If it's not accurate, then I'm not so sure why we're making a decision off of it. So I have these three positions. I'd be curious just, you know, how they arrived at the numbers. And maybe there's a good explanation, maybe there isn't. But if it doesn't align with checking the websites of other counties and where their midpoints are, then what they're telling us is that we're underpaying people.
Sure. So I, I think if, if, it sounds like Commissioner Matarri has three specific ones. Can we put those back to the consultant and say, can you explain the differences here?
I can reach out and ask.
Okay, because I want to say when she came here, she was absolutely adamant on if we had any questions whatsoever, that we needed to reach out to her.
Yeah.
Well, it was a big document, so, and this was done in collaboration with others, so, but if we could find out.
As far as the market study?
Yeah, just as far as figuring out, you know, where some of these numbers came from.
Yeah, we just, we didn't have the manpower to do it internally. There's also concerns of bias when we do it in-house, so that's why we went with a consultant that we recommended to the board, but it was with board approval.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the unfortunate part was, we had a longstanding relationship with the company that went out of business, and so this is not anything that I've seen before as far as the way it was laid out.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like that, so, yeah, so I'm fine if we want to ask the consultant to review those three that you have identified specifically, and then we can have another meeting about that. None of those three that you picked are in the top tier. Is that correct? So I'd be willing to get a preliminary number for the top-tier one if you wanted.
If you want to, that's fine. I just want to understand why there's a difference.
Sure.
There's got to be some thought process behind this. And my fear is, is that because it's mass data, that, you know, they're not actually spot-checking this. So we don't even know how, you know, current it is.
We can get that, those questions answered, and then, so we can just wait. And once those questions are answered, then we can determine how we want to go from there.
Because I really, go ahead.
A question, too. One of the other things, when I looked at this wage study, I was concerned about. Some markets were like, like my election manager only had four markets, and then some markets were thrown in cities, and they would have nine, counties and cities. And so what I saw, when those cities were combined with the counties, the nine markets, you would see Spokane Valley, Spokane, and then the city of Spokane. So you had county Spokane, city Spokane, Spokane Valley. And what I could see on mine is you would see like seventeen, seventeen, eighteen for those Spokane cities in Spokane County. And so what I could gather from the data I was presented, it was taking the nine markets there and averaging those. And so, you know, you have a position, maybe they only was bringing four markets of the county, and you're averaging those. But then you had some that had nine, with Spokane obviously coming in, particularly the cities coming in a lot more. So I do have some concerns in that, too, that certain positions had the cities in there and some that didn't.
So add that to the question for the consultant.
So that is based off an eighty percent match. If they can find a position with an eighty percent match within those markets, they are using them. And that's been standard practice in previous wage studies as well with other consultants.
So that's probably why that those had...
Well, I'll just say, like, the recording specialists, I'm pretty sure they don't do that in the city of Coeur d'Alene. Passports, marriage license, titles, liquor license, same thing in Post Falls.
But again, if the education and the skills required and the experience and the, the, I guess it's just the skills required, if those all match eighty percent, then that, in their system, would be a reasonable market, so.
Well, I just had questions, and I'm just trying to learn more about it, too, myself, so. But that was one thing I did see as my department says, some had four, and you're averaging that out of the four. Some had nine, and then when you have those three cities in there, including Boise, it would obviously be a higher increase averaging those.
Sure.
And that was the market established by the board, so.
Anything else?
Thank you. I will reach out to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Brandy?
All right, so we're going to jump to the budget portion of this meeting and go through...
Stan, would you...
I can still five seconds, just to correct the record. Stan Wortenson, prosecutor. I misspoke earlier. Of my six, I lost this last year, only two went to the bench. I just didn't want any misinformation out there, so I apologize.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to do the budget portion of the meeting. So I'm going to start off with the preliminary summary. The board has a printed copy in front of them, so it's easier for you to read than on the screen. Since we last met, there have been some changes that have put us at a further deficit. Primarily during the CapEx meeting, the board chose to fund two million dollars of capital requests, not with fund balance. So those requests are being offset with interest income in the budget, which means we had to lower our fund balance revenue, which puts us further in a deficit, which just means you're forcing yourself to make more budget cuts to ongoing costs, such as personnel and B-budget. Additionally, the board may remember from last budget cycle, our accounting system, I'm required to manually enter steps for employees that have step dates in August and September. So I completed that between our last meeting and now, so that's increased the deficit a little bit as well. So over on the right, at a three percent tax increase now, our deficit is seven hundred and thirty-four thousand. At a two percent tax increase, the deficit is one point three million. A one percent tax increase, the deficit is one point nine. And at a zero percent tax increase, the deficit is two point five nine. And as a reminder, that does not include any calculated COLA increase at this time. Before we jump into our personnel requests, Commissioner Eberline asked me if we could talk about open positions today. So Commissioner Eberline, what did you want to discuss regarding open positions?
Pardon?
The open positions. So yesterday you had told me you wanted to discuss how much we fund open positions in the budget?
Yes. So, why do we want to do that? It's because there's lots of money out there, because it's... We, we don't need to, to, we don't need to have spare anybody's. We can, we can have people that are working, or if somebody is terminated or... I guess I'm getting flustered.
So the open positions in the budget right now, historically, there are certain departments who have lots of open positions all the time.
Yes.
And that's primarily the jail and the nine-one-one department. And so those are kind of those positions that tend to be chronically open for a long time. There are some other departments that might have some open for a long time, like prosecutors sometimes. And so in the past, the board has said, well, there's historically a lower chance that those positions will get filled, and so they don't fund those a hundred percent. They usually fund them at fifty percent, because if a department is short-staffed, that means the existing staff often have to work a lot of overtime. And so having some of the cushion from those open positions help absorb the extra overtime they have to work. So, but that being said, the board can choose to fund them at a lower percentage. So if you want to, we can fund them at an even lower percentage if two out of three commissioners would like to consider doing that. So did you have a specific percentage, maybe?
I don't have a specific percentage, but I do think it's a good idea to do it, because I think it's, it's a savings to the taxpayers, and it gets, and it gets it to where we're doing our job properly instead of just throwing spitwads on the wall and saying, here.
Now, the only challenge with that, though, is that as you start to fill these positions, it automatically increases the following year. And so if you go down to twenty percent... And so if you go down to 20% funding and then you fill that position, even if it's on the last day of the year, you're still, you've got to go up to 100% funding for these positions. So it's almost like, do we need the positions is really what should be determined first.
Exactly, and that's.
And if we don't need the positions, then we shouldn't have them. But if we do need them, they should be funded either at 50 or 100% or some high enough number so that if we do fill them, that it's, we're prepared for that in the budget. We can handle that.
That's what I'm proposing.
Okay, well, then we would need to know what positions that are open that have not been filled should be eliminated is really the question then.
So would you like me to email you a report of all of the open positions? And then you can see what departments have the open positions? And then you can discuss with those elected officials if they really need those positions or if they want to eliminate those positions. Is that what you would like to do?
Well, there's one other thing too, though, that, some of that salary savings that we get from those unfilled positions, it gets used for overtime.
Yes.
You know, and so then we'll, again, like the balloon, you squeeze here, you're going to have to, you know, make up for it at a different place. So I think what's important is that we at least have the elected officials present the staffing needs that they absolutely have to have, and then let's figure out what we have to do to fill them and, and then go from there.
So right now, we are saving taxpayers 1.2 million dollars in the budget by slashing the funding on those positions that have been open for a long time. So we are saving 1.2 million right now. And I'll, I'll send an open position report to the board and you can decide if you want to take further action on cutting those even more. Does that sound good?
I think so.
Okay.
And that's 100% you slashed or 50%?
Uh, the ones that have been open longer than 100 days are cut by 50%.
Okay.
So, and, I mean, we've had for years now 911 and detention deputy, but the goal is to fill all of those. And I think right now we're seeing a little bit of a shift in private markets coming towards government or private sector employees coming towards government jobs.
I mean, the last number I heard, we had about 50 people in backgrounds for the jail. So, you know, hopefully at least 20% of that makes it through and we can start filling some of these positions.
I think we have some people can speak to just about how many in backgrounds for detention?
Detention is probably about 12.
12? Okay. Okay.
But that's just detention. I think there were others too. Okay.
All right, so that's where we stand. The total proposed expenditures are at 146 million right now. That includes solid waste. When you look at just general government, that's 120 million. So I'm going to jump into the personnel summary. In your packet, I had an orange sticky note tab at the top so you can tell where we're going to be for the rest of the meeting. And so we're going to start at the top. This section is requests for new positions or brand new stipends or what have you. So I'm going to start on line one with the assessor. They have a request for a new commercial appraiser three. Total loaded cost is 104,000 dollars. And as we go through, if you need more information, please ask. If not, we can just try and mark these as approved for now, cut for now. And we can always change these decisions later.
I do have a question though, and perhaps the assessor can come up. In your documentation of the number of properties that your appraisers are assessing each year, is that just residential? I just don't remember, the 3,400 properties.
I believe you're referring to the, the presentation that was made to the board a couple of weeks ago.
Yep.
It's, it's in all parcels.
All parcels.
And, and all divisions. It's, it's, it's the staff that's involved, that, that is involved with regard to the valuation program, revow.
And is your appraisal department full right now or do you have vacancies?
Uh, we have vacancies and I did want to speak almost preemptively a little bit about that because all of our vacancies that we have, and we fluctuate. We try, we get down to having maybe one or two vacant and then there's some changes that occur. We have people leave or what have you. The challenge in the assessor's office is we have, we are extremely deadline oriented. We have lots of work that has to be done and the deadlines are throughout the year. And that results in very few windows of opportunity for training. And the training must be one-on-one training. The, the individuals that are hired have to be supervised. They have to complete one year worth of work before they can become certified. They have to, you know, go through the exam and the coursework. And so it leaves for very little opportunity. We don't want to hire people and then not have an individual be able to work, assigned to them and work with them to be able to give them the one-on-one training that is necessary. And so as a result of that, and plus there's a limited pool of applicants that have the aptitude. We, we have, we submit applicants to a test and if they meet a certain criteria, then we interview them and we go forward. And then we assess them for fitness. And so, you know, we line all those things up and it's very difficult, so.
All right, so it takes what, about six to eight months for you to get someone up to speed, basically?
Well, you know, if we're talking total competency, it's really closer to five years.
I'm talking about starting to fill positions for you, okay? Because you have some asks here and you have some vacant positions, right? And so I'm trying to figure out the likelihood of you filling these vacant positions and the likelihood of you filling any additional asks over the course of FY '26.
Right. That is a separate, I mean, I did want to have a conversation, which I have not yet had with my managers, but I would like to push that we will do our best to actually get those filled.
So how many, how many do you have open right now?
Right now, I'm going on memory and I believe we have three vacant appraiser positions. And I don't know if that's correct or not, but I think it's three vacant appraiser positions.
Okay. Do you have any in the?
That's all in residential.
Do you have any in the pipeline that you were, about you're interviewing, you're about to extend job offers, anything like that?
Uh, I don't believe we're quite at that point yet. I mean, I believe we have some, you know, we're in the in-between stages of posting because we just finished our, our valuation and we have assessment notices that have gone out now. We're into that busy season where we're spending time working on assessment reviews and then we're going to move into BOE.
Yeah. I mean, if you can't fill them next year, I wouldn't put them in here. But I don't know how quickly you can fill them.
I respectfully ask that I have, allow me some time to ask, have some conversations with my staff to make those commitments and then we'll, we'll talk maybe next week, if that's okay.
So I would then suggest that we cut for now and then bring something back if they, if they can do that. Because what I've found in my tenure here is that if a department cannot be fully staffed for a length of time, then there's no point in giving extra positions because then they can't fill the ones they have and then they're trying to fill new ones. So it's best if you're like, okay, look, we've been, we've been full for six months. We've got a good crew. Now we really need that extra body and then we can.
Yeah, I would be good with just keeping at least for now, as a maybe, the commercial and the residential. And then, you know, you, and then we can discuss that in the future of which one you want to have.
And we have recognized that we need to fast-track it. We need to find a better way to onboard quicker. Some of it is doable, some of it, you know, possibly doable, some of it may not be because they have to go through the whole year and they have to go through the educational criteria to become certified.
Okay, well.
What does Mark want?
What are your thoughts?
Let's get it going.
I'm proposing that we just keep one and two, lines one and two right now and then we'll decide in the future.
Yep.
Well, the line two is appraisal clerk three unless that's changed. Hang on here because I'm not looking at the new one.
It is.
Yeah, I think we're going to have to have some flexibility because others will probably move up into a three who, so.
Well, okay, but I thought you wanted a new residential appraisal and a new commercial appraiser.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, so then I would say keep lines one and four.
Yep.
If Mark is agreeable to those and then cut the others.
Yep.
Those are the ones I had plugged anyway.
All right.
All right, so I'm going to mark line one, which is a commercial appraiser three as approved for now. We're going to cut lines two and three, which are both appraisal clerk threes, cut for now. And then we're going to approve for now line four, which is residential appraiser one. And we're going to cut line five, which is another residential appraiser one.
Fill them up and we'll talk about putting more on.
I would like the opportunity to come back and talk to you before this budget is finalized.
There are future budget meetings and you'll, and we'll.
Yeah, there's more, there's more.
Yep.
All right, so line six is a request from Buildings and Grounds for a new maintenance assistant. These are the positions that are essentially doing our in-house janitorial services at this campus.
I would say keep that one for now. We just added 58,000 square feet. Otherwise we'll have to get a contractor.
Commissioner Eberline?
Yeah.
All right.
All right, that's a keep for now. Line seven is also a request from Buildings and Grounds. This is for a part-time senior maintenance operator at 16 hours per week. So this is going to be one of the maintenance guys that goes around and works on buildings.
Thoughts?
I could go either way with this one, only because I, again, like to see how things flesh out. But it is part-time, so I, I know we can fill a part-time position for this, so I'm, I'm either way. I know that they can be put to work because we've got aging buildings and now a new brand, a brand new one that's probably going to need some tweaks.
Keep for now?
Yes.
Okay, keep for now. Number eight. That was seven.
Seven, that was line seven. Now we're on line eight. This is a request from Parks and Waterways for a new park ranger. This is the request that Nick presented for at the beginning of the meeting.
I'm good with it.
Yes.
I'm good with it too.
All right. Line nine is a request from Solid Waste and so is line 10. These are both requests for solid waste technicians, for loaded costs for each of them at 68,000 dollars.
Keep both. It's not tax-supported.
Yep, keep them.
All right, keep those. Line 11 is a request from the District Court Clerks for a new judicial assistant. This is due to the new judge that is coming on board.
I don't think we have a choice.
Yeah, there is no choice.
Yeah, not much of a choice with that one. Next is a request from the District Court Clerks for a stipend for the ADJ secretary, it looks like. This is, was formally paid as a one-time bonus to the person in this position. And I recommended they request it be paid as a stipend so that the employee is getting a certain dollar amount per paycheck instead of a one-time bonus.
Initially, Commissioners, that was in the Trial Court Administrator's budget and it's being moved into our, the clerk's budget under District Court because technically it's our employee there.
Yeah, yeah, I'm fine keeping that. It's what we already do.
You good with that?
Yep.
Okay.
All right. Line 13 is a request from the clerk for the Elections Department, a new position for the Elections Director. And it is almost all offset by other requests from Elections below.
I say keep for now.
You good with that?
Yep.
All right, Mark, that is approved. Line 13, no, sorry. Line 14 is a request from the Trial Court Administrator in District Court for a new judicial staff attorney. This is also due to the new judge that we have. So each judge needs their own attorney.
Do we have a choice?
I mean, you always have a choice.
Yeah, but it's not really a choice.
Okay, I'm going to mark that as keep for now. Line 15 is a request from the Prosecutor in the Criminal Division. They want to extend their part-time temporary investigator through FY '26.
I'm happy with both of those part-time positions.
Mark, part-time?
Yeah.
Two of them. Good.
All right, so that's the part-time investigator and then the next one is the part-time victim coordinator, same thing. Line 17 is a request from the Sheriff in the Admin Department for a new position for a communications coordinator.
What do you want?
I want to be able to fund the positions we need without raising taxes. Can you make that happen?
My magic wand is in for servicing right now.
Better get it out.
Get a new one.
You guys, tell me what you want to do.
I say keep for now, but that one might have to go, especially if we want to make sure that we have enough money to fund other things with the patrol and command staff.
Possibly sergeant.
Other position?
Yep.
Okay, so do we get 17 keep for now?
Do you want to keep 17?
That's the communications coordinator. Item, yeah, item 17.
Yep.
Did you say yes?
Yes.
For now.
Okay, the communications coordinator is keep for now. Line 18 is also a request from the Sheriff Admin Department for a new sergeant. I believe this is the recruiting sergeant. And it also comes with a new car. Yep, recruiting sergeant.
Do you guys have thoughts on that?
I'll hear yours first.
I have no thoughts on it. You're the liaison. You've spent a lot more time with this. You actually asked questions at the last meeting about this position.
Yeah. Again, this one's just difficult because with them being full in patrol, obviously they still need help with detention, but to have a full sergeant position dedicated to that, I just don't know that it's 40 hours a week job, so that's, it's hard. I, I know who'd be a great fit for that position, but it's, I can't do it based on the person. I have to do it based on what we can afford and what is probably needed.
So you're looking at item 18?
Yes. What would you like to do, Mark?
Well, do we have any other interpreters?
Oh, this, this is line 18. Uh, this is for the new recruiting sergeant for the sheriff's office. So it'd be a new sergeant position focused just on recruiting.
So as a consequence, can you get rid of it? Probably not.
Well, I mean, from my understanding, I don't know, Commissioner Duncan, maybe you know more. We're full in patrol and.
12 in backgrounds for detention.
How many open spots are there over there?
Have that here. And detention is going to be two, four, six, eight, 10, 12, 14, 16 from my last report.
And 12 in backgrounds?
Yep.
So there you go. Full in patrol and 12 in backgrounds for 16 open positions.
So you want to cut that for now?
Not much.
Commissioners, I think one of the biggest concerns or rubs with this position is, again, with the jail being remodeled to add additional housing and stuff, more deputies will be needed for that. And so will the recruiting at that time be suffering because we don't have someone in this position? If the board is inclined to say, we're not going to press you daily on why you haven't filled those spots because we can't actively go out there with a specific person to recruit and our recruiting stands as is today, that we do everything we can to continue to fight to find candidates who qualify to be in those positions, then I think this might be something that maybe we could look at. There's other pressing needs at the sheriff's office coming up down the road here that we would be willing to concede this position in lieu of trying to get something else established.
I think that sounds like a good idea.
I think it's just been talked about for several years now about, you know, you need to recruit, you need to recruit. So I think this was kind of a collective thought at the beginning of last year of you need to find somebody to be able to do that consistently. But as you've pointed out recently, we are in a different position today than we were back then. So, um, as I said, this is just one of those things that are going to be recruiting needs down the road that will have to just be resigned to doing in-house like we are today.
And my understanding is only four new positions will be needed for the expansion.
I'm sorry, how many?
Four. Captain Heil?
Captain Heil, for the record. Uh, yeah, as we spoke the other day, my initial plan would be to ask for four, uh, floor deputies and then six, because you text in FY twenty-seven budget.
Okay, so we'll have to see how you keep your positions filled for that.
So what do y'all want to do?
Uh, I guess keep it, but we'll have to cut some things down below, I suppose.
What are we gonna cut?
Commissioners, again, you know, what we're, I guess, proposing also is, we're looking at this SIU position coming up here. We aren't there yet. I don't know if Brandy can jump ahead to that. That is one that we've gone back and assessed as a true need of the Sheriff's Office. We, again, I know Commissioner Matarri doesn't like anecdotal stuff, but we have produced some stats on that. We are showing some trends from twenty-three to twenty-four, which are, um, in some of the categories doubling. Others are making increases. Those trends appear to be in twenty-twenty-five from year-to-date, holding to the same standards. And that unit is only three guys. Uh, conversely, you know, the Corollian City Police Department has six for, for a unit of that size, plus an additional two that are focusing solely on fentanyl. And so we're looking at trying to beef up some of those, those abilities to go out there and fight the battles on that part. You know, again, routinely as well, when we go on missions and stuff, it can't be captured in stats for that. But our missions that we go on, we're routinely pulling from other areas to help back, back them up and provide additional staffing to go to these calls, such as we're bringing in patrol staff, or we have to work with the US Marshals, or we have to go to the CAT team and say, "We need you to come plus up our numbers because we're too short to go, uh, attack this particular offender." And so that is where we're looking at really pressing is the SIU position. So we would look at that community, um, Coordinator, Communications Coordinator position and this current Sergeant position and eliminate those and make more of a move and a push towards this SIU position. Again, not that those are not needs. We, we don't ever want to get in that either of, of somebody trying to go, "Well, why did you put them there if those aren't the need?" There are needs that you've always said, "Give me your biggest needs. This is the bigger need."
Okay, so you're okay with cutting the Sergeant, cutting the Communications Coordinator and keeping SIU?
Yes.
Yeah, and just as a follow-up to the recruiter, that was discussed a couple of years ago because you were down to almost fifty percent vacancy in the jail. And you weren't getting qualified applicants. You just weren't getting qualified applicants. So if you're not getting applicants, then you have to go out and find applicants. And that's part of the reason there was even a discussion for recruiter. And for anyone who's been in the military, I think they understand, those guys go out and they, they find people. Uh, they don't just wait for people to, to submit an application to become a member of the military. Now, with that said, uh, we increased the pay, and you started getting those applications. So, um, I think the need for a recruiter is less than what was originally discussed. The circumstances are different. In fact, for the kind of money that's being talked about here, you know, you almost wonder if, uh, some small bonuses wouldn't get you over the, the hump. But at this point, the question is, are you getting qualified applicants? And if the answer is yes, then maybe this shouldn't be, shouldn't be on here because the conditions have changed from a couple of years ago. A couple of years ago, it was dire.
Yes, I think that we would concede to that. I mean, again, um, we're doing very well. It still will be a fight down the road, and we are still going to have to go out there and look for those qualified applicants. But I think that we can do that as we are right now internally, specifically targeting some guys to go short-duration trips to target some of those, uh, events that might spark application processes. And to continue, just to keep putting the word out there, as the Sheriff constantly tells us, we're recruiting every day from within the agency by all being recruiters when we meet people out in the public.
What would probably be helpful is just to have a list and priority of what you consider to be the most important down to the least important. If, if you're willing to make some, uh, adjustments. That way, it's easier because we're just going to discuss these things. And quite frankly, I don't know your job. So for me to tell you who you should have and who you shouldn't have, I think is a fool's errand. You know, you guys should tell us what you really need and then prioritize down from there, which you don't, you know, which you can get by without.
Can you?
Yeah, we can certainly reconvene and come back with more of a, a, a true categorized list of A-through-C type stuff. Again, needs, these are needs, but if you want us to prioritize, if you're telling us this budget is not going to fly with those positions in there, then we will go back and readdress and bring to you what we can live with and get over to push us forward and sacrifice the others on the back end.
That's what I'm talking about. You guys know more than we do, so. You know what you need.
Okay, that's what we will do. And again, I don't want to put you on the spot. I don't know how many of these needs we have to categorize, but we will try to put them in some sort of an order so that we can then sift through them from there and discuss.
See, here's, here's the challenge, is that everyone has needs, right? So you tell us you have needs, other people tell us they have needs, and that's where the assessor, he shows us, he shows us, you know, th- that workload. And so it's easier to identify where, you know, how to triage, you know, everyone's asks. I have a hard time looking at this list and going, okay, whose needs are more than the other? Which elected official's needs are more than the other elected official's needs? Because it's not articulated in a way. I mean, I don't want to tell you, you don't need a recruiter, right? You, you probably will need one over the coming years to some degree. But today, you know, after, uh, increasing the pay, you're getting those applications. So is that importance of a recruiter still up here like it was two years ago? I would argue it's gone down a lot because you are getting the applications because the pay is more aligned with what a market pay is for these jobs.
That's why I believe that we're good with saying, let's, let's let that go.
Yeah. Um, so then what I would recommend, I recommend keeping SIU, and then I recommend for items twenty-one through twenty-eight, that you prioritize those. And I realize that some maintenance, they're not all, um, all like that.
Twenty-one through twenty-eight?
Yeah.
To keep those?
Prioritize. So, yeah, because they'll, they'll come back and they can even work with Brandy. They, we don't need a public meeting for them to pull, if, if they choose to pull anything, so.
So based on the discussion, um, it seems that the Sheriff's Office is willing to cut the Communications Coordinator and the Recruiting Sergeant in exchange for the Board approving the SIU detective.
That's what I heard.
Does that sound good to the Board at this, at this point in time?
Well, let's say yes today and decide tomorrow, so, um, that's what it sounds like.
All right, I'm gonna mark the SIU detective as approved for now, then.
Yeah.
And the Communications Coordinator and the Recruiting Sergeant as a cut for now. Next is also a request from the Sheriff's Office for an interpreter stipend of one dollar per hour for ten deputies.
I'm okay with keeping that for now. My understanding is that they will have a certification process because I know that there are requirements through courts and through other things that a, a true interpreter has to meet certain qualifications.
Mark?
Yeah, what's your, what are, which ones are you talking about here?
Uh, I think that's nineteen.
Yep.
Nineteen? So that's just a stipend?
Yep.
Yep, it's one dollar an hour for up to ten deputies if they're bilingual and they're using the other language in the performance of their job duties.
Good. You got direction.
All right, keep it for now. Items twenty-one through twenty-eight. We're gonna wait for the Sheriff's Office to get back to us in terms of listing those, uh, in priority. The last item in the top section, number twenty-nine, is a request for a new Lieutenant from the Sheriff's Office specifically for the City of Hayden contract. The loaded cost is a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars, and then the vehicle for that position is ninety-four thousand dollars. I would recommend the Board only fund this if it's paid for by the City of Hayden.
Yeah, so, um, it actually is going to be covered by the City of Hayden. What they have done is rearranged some of their capital money to put towards salaries. They have eliminated an SRO position, and, um, they have come, uh, twenty percent closer to covering their full costs, and that's what they're, uh, trying to do every single year, is at least twenty percent.
So I'll have to get an updated revenue number from the Sheriff's Office because last time I checked, even when you don't include the SRO, they're still behind in the contract.
Yeah, and, and I think that this is something that really needs to be addressed because, you know, when, when we enter into a contract where we're losing money, you know, meaning that we're getting paid less than it costs the county, we are, at that point, stuck if any other city wants to engage in a contract because we're now offering a below-market rate or a below-cost rate, and we can't charge a higher rate to another city. We're stuck with those rates. And, you know, the question is, when will Hayden? What, what is the plan for Hayden? Give us a deadline of when they will get there, and then I think we can work on that. But it, every year, it's always been just, well, we're going to get closer, we're going to get closer, but they keep adding more to the contract. So it's almost like, you know, they, they get closer to their goal, but they move the goalpost with additional expenses. And I'm not quite sure I understand why we're entertaining that because we are binding ourselves with other cities that may want to enter into a contract because we're charging less than what it costs.
They're looking at getting to full cost in five years and paying along the way if they need more deputies.
Well, put it in a contract, lay it out, you know, and it needs to include our col, our steps, our, our, any colas. It has to be automatically included in there because, again, these are the, these are the, these are the stipulations in a contract that put us negative the moment we sign them. And I don't understand why we're doing that. I mean, quite frankly, you know, I love the City of Hayden, but sometimes I have to wonder, if you look at their budget, where their Parks and Waterways money goes compared to their law enforcement budget.
Charity.
And, yes, and then I think, uh, you know, the Finance Director put together a wonderful document that, that illustrated what each of the different cities are paying towards justice. And I think if you look at the city in question compared to the next highest city, it is massive. And yet, we have no say over the growth and, uh, the, you know, it's just, it's a draw on county resources. So that's the only thing I ask, and I actually have some ideas that I would like to talk about with this because, uh, I want to make sure we're not reinventing the wheel, uh, because this is a very standard practice throughout the country.
So Hayden is happy to come make a presentation to the Board?
Uh, look, from my perspective, all I want to know is when will they be paying for what the services are that the county's delivering? Because I think it's immoral for us to be asking citizens in rural parts of the county to be subsidizing other cities. It just, we need to have a deadline of when they're going to get there, and let's get there and let's move forward, um, you know.
Bingo.
You know, I got a, a email from a constituent saying, you know, "I feel like when I see this stuff, that we're not getting the same service levels because the resources go to the more populated areas." And I think that's important to address that.
So in terms of Board direction of leaving this request in the budget for now or cutting it for now, what are the Board's thoughts?
You have thoughts?
I'd like to leave it for now.
Pardon? Leave the Lieutenant in for the, uh, line twenty-nine, leave it in for now?
Yeah, I got it.
All right, I'm gonna mark it as a leave-in for now, and I'm gonna get an updated revenue number from the Sheriff's Office. And at the next meeting, I'll present where we stand in terms of a surplus or a deficit with that contract.
And does this position require a car?
Yes, it does.
Is that going to be included in the, uh, contract?
Uh, I, in the contract, I don't know. That'd be a question for the Sheriff's Office.
All right.
That is correct. Hayden has also set aside funding for a capital request of their own for the vehicle to go.
So it will cover the cost of the car?
Yes. All right, so we finished with the top section. These are the most expensive requests that are in the budget. I think we're probably going to have to revisit this and do some more cuts, quite honestly, just knowing the deficit that we're at right now, uh, with the budget. But for now, we'll leave it as is, and we're going to move down to the bottom section, which is changes to existing positions. I'm gonna start with line thirty. Um, we have lines thirty through forty-four are requests from the Assessor's Office. So line thirty is for a career progression for the mobile home appraiser from a Appraiser II to an Appraiser III, a total loaded cost of tw- two thousand dollars. And I will point out that this entire lower section, if you look at the bottom in blue, total changes are negative one hundred and twenty-nine thousand. That means that this section added together is actually a net budget savings. That doesn't mean you can just automatically say yes to everything, but it does mean that you're starting from a place of savings, and anything you cut will only increase budget savings, which is a nice place to be.
And this is a way to, to address mid-year changes.
Yeah, so the, well, in theory, it's supposed to.
In, in theory, but that's what we're trying to mitigate are these mid-year changes because that's how we get roped into, you know, it automatically goes into the next year's budget, and there's very little that can be said. And I, I don't know what your experience is, but usually around April, March is when all the mid-year changes, uh,
Yep.
come flying in.
Yes, so this is a, uh, just a request for career progression for this appraiser. Um, and it's, it's, it is prorated to take effect in June of twenty-twenty-six.
I mean, if that's the case for all of these appraisers, I don't have any problem with it. I mean, it's the deal we make with the employees. I mean, they, they, they meet the certification levels, and in exchange, we promise them, uh, these grades.
So that would be line thirty, and then line thirty-two through thirty-nine, those are all career progression. Does the Board feel comfortable, uh, leaving those in for now?
I do.
Yes.
It's fine.
All right. So line thirty-one is a request to convert an appraisal technician two to a business intelligence analyst in the Assessor's Office.
Thoughts on this?
I'd probably need more information because when the conversion happened, they said, you know, "Okay, that's what we need." But then they came back and asked for a tech later because the same job wasn't getting done. And so now we're back and forth again to, between techs and, and BIAs. So that, I think, is something that's up for, um, conversation. And then there's also one that's a, um, another appraisal tech converted to a residential appraiser one. And we've already kind of said that we're keeping one commercial and one residential. It's another residential position.
Well, I wouldn't mind just kind of getting a little presentation about these, uh, what do you call them, the business intelligence analysts, just what you would have them do and how that would kind of work just by, because you're expanding that department.
Yeah.
And kind of reducing the appraisal department.
Commissioners, Assessor Kovacs, um, to try and speak to both of your concerns, um, the business intelligence analysts, the, 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 the title used to be appraisal techs. And, um, looking at our, um, our expenditures for the, in the prior years, twenty-twenty-two, twenty, twenty-twenty-two and before, we had overtime charges that were equivalent to, that almost exceeded another FTE for each of the two that we had. With the BIAs that we, we brought in, um, with the skill sets that they have, the, the higher technical skill sets that they have, they've been able to automate many processes, and, um, we don't have that overtime any longer. Uh, we did bring in an individual, and that's the one position that you have up there that's, uh, we're asking to convert, who has exceptional technical skills. It goes back to the situation where if you want to keep people, you got to pay them what they're worth. This individual is, is contributing to our department, um, and, and automating processes that is only going to translate into savings for, throughout the whole entire department. And it, and that includes the, the work that's done by the appraisers as well as other sections of the department. And so that's really what our request is for that BIA, uh, in that, that, I'm sorry, that appraisal tech.
So how, how many BIAs do you have today?
Two.
Two. Okay, and then how many techs?
We have, right now, one tech. And, and, and an appraiser tech is a position, for the lack of a better way of saying it, it's, it's kind of, it, it's, it's been used in a variety of ways. The request that, the, the two positions that you will cut today are appraiser tech positions as well. And we, we are seeking those positions to, to work in support of the appraisers, which is more along the lines of, um, ministerial. which is more along the lines of ministerial support that really helps prepare the appraisers to be much more efficient and effective when it comes to field work and so forth. So.
Is there a way you could show us that? Kind of illustrate it?
Well, if you mean come back with a presentation, sure, we'd be willing to do that.
Okay.
It would help.
Right, because what happened was, you had two techs, you made them two BIAs, and you had to add another tech because the BIAs weren't filling that same role. And now you're asking for more BIAs. So in the beginning, I'm kind of confused how these BIAs were supposed to do more and better. And you're telling me here that they've automated things. So we should be getting rid of personnel, not adding personnel.
What you're saying is not correct, Ms. Duncan. We had three appraisal techs. We converted two to BIAs. We left one as an appraisal tech. And it's that one that's left as an appraisal tech that we're asking to convert also now to a BIA. Because we have a different individual that moved into that position that has superior skill sets.
Okay, but you did come back for another tech after the BIAs were there. So I guess maybe you had two and two?
Excuse me?
I don't know. It's okay. Just come back with your presentation. So we can better comprehend why we're adding more bodies.
Okay.
Well, you're converting. You're not adding.
Yeah.
I'm going to mark line thirty-one as, like, on hold for now. The assessor's going to come back and give a presentation on that. Line forty is a request from the assessor to convert a residential appraisal tech to a residential appraiser one.
If I could speak to that, so last, I believe it was last budget year, we, that position was an appraiser. We converted it down to a tech. All we're simply asking to do is revert that back to an appraiser. So if you recall the presentation that Chief Deputy Dyson presented to the board a week or two ago, we're trying to get to that parcel count per appraiser, per individual, that will help us achieve that optimal number. We're not going to get there to perfection. And so it will entail a balance of appraisers and support people. And the appraiser techs that we're asking for are the support people that will provide the level of support to the appraisers.
Okay, well, if there's some way you can just kind of show us, I mean, it'd be great. Just understand what you're trying to do with your org chart, where you're trying to kind of settle in.
Okay.
Who'll be doing what, and how you're going to get those efficiencies.
Okay.
You know, if two is good and three is better, let's, you know, hear it out.
Be happy to do that.
Okay.
Okay, so line forty, I'm just going to mark as hold for now until you get your presentation. Yep, line forty. So now we're on line forty-one, which is a request from the assessor's office for the DMV. So this is career progression for this line and the next line, line forty-two, for two title clerks to go from title clerk two to title clerk three.
Fine to keep that for now.
Yeah, I mean, that's, is that, again, part of the deal, that you get a certification? Or is it just time? How do you go from a two to a three?
So with regard to the DMV, and I might ask Anna come up to join. But with regard to the DMV, no, they're not certified positions. But these are, this is career progression and growth. I'll let Anna speak to the details of these two positions.
Right, for those two positions, it's just time in, experience, and just the necessity to have more veteran staff to be able to work in different areas of our business to create a more efficient rotation that we do.
So they expand their, what they perform, their duties perform?
Yes, for the business.
Okay. Makes sense to me.
All right, so I'm going to mark line forty-one and forty-two as keep for now. Lines forty-three and forty-four are also career progression requests for two mapping specialists in the assessor's office to go from mapping specialist one to mapping specialist two.
But it says one, so mark that as a two?
It says one, but it should be two, I believe.
Okay, so same thing.
Yeah, it should be two.
If we're keeping all the appraiser promotions, then I'd say keep those as well.
Okay. Mark?
Good.
Okay.
Okay, those are keep for now.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Line forty-five is a request from adult misdemeanor probation for employee bonuses. Total cost of two thousand dollars. And this is the same amount that they requested last year for bonuses.
Good for me.
Okay.
You got your direction.
Keep the bonuses in. There's a request from, this is technically in the BOCC budget, but the request was made by HR. This is the temp employment pool in general fund to decrease it from thirty-five thousand to twenty-five thousand. This is the funding that departments can access when they want to hire a temporary employee.
I am fine reducing it.
Good.
All right. Line forty-seven, again, a request from the BOCC budget to increase countywide service awards from twelve thousand three hundred to fourteen thousand. Those are the awards given out to employees when they hit certain, like, five, ten, fifteen years with the county.
Yeah, it's just under our budget. I'm fine with keeping it.
Mark?
It means.
Fine, good.
All right, mark that as approved. Line forty-eight is, again, a request in the board's budget, countywide referral bonuses. This is a request to decrease it from thirty thousand down to twenty thousand.
I'm fine with the decrease.
You good with that?
Yes.
All right, approved. Line forty-nine is a request from community development to freeze a planning assistant position for a savings of seventy-one thousand dollars.
Commissioners?
Yes, go ahead, Director Cowan.
I would ask that we actually cut this position because we no longer need it. But it comes with a request. If you look at the bottom of this page where it says we have cut a plans examiner part-time position, I'd like to reinstate that. That was my mistake. I thought we were ready to let that position go. The chief billing official informed me we still need it in order to train, so that the staff we have can train up to what this person has been doing.
I think that that's what's in there. So the part-time plans examiner that's under budget cuts, that means that it's not being requested to get rid of that position.
Thank you.
So the part-time plans examiner is staying in your budget. And then the request above is to freeze the planning assistant position. And you still want to get rid of the planning assistant?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So that's a savings of seventy-one thousand dollars.
Why is that? Just out of curiosity, what?
Sorry, David, you got a.
We were able, sorry, we were able to combine work under one person, so it's more efficient.
Okay, good.
So you're cutting line forty-eight?
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine is, we're eliminating it.
Yep, I'm going to mark that as approved. Line fifty-one is a request from juvenile probation to convert a position from supervisor to assistant director.
Yeah, this was supposed to come back before the board, and it hasn't. So, and I think there's some other issues with it that the board should probably discuss before we look at this. But I'll leave it up to my contemporaries up here to decide if they want to keep it in the budget.
Oh, well, I'm fine to keep it and get that presentation that you want.
Yes.
All right, and the mark is keep for now. So line fifty-two, fifty-three, and fifty-four is a request from Parks and Waterways for eighteen hundred dollars' worth of employee bonuses. This is a hundred and fifty dollar increase from FY twenty-five because of an additional employee.
I would support that all the way.
Okay, keep.
All right, employee bonuses are approved. Line fifty-five through sixty is a request from the transit department to change the funding on their positions from county funding to grant funding. And this would make all of their positions grant-funded.
I'm good.
You good with that, Mark? I think, I think.
I'm going to bounce on that.
Yeah, I think you got two on that.
Okay, that's approved for now. Line sixty-one is a request from district court clerks. Line sixty-two and sixty-one and sixty-two. Clerk two's career progression to promote to clerk three.
Yep, keep.
All right, head nod is counted, so I'm marking that as approved.
I mean, the career progression stuff, that's part of our deal that we offer people, so.
Yep. Thank you for humoring me by going through all of them.
Which ones are you going, sixty-one?
Sixty-one and two stay.
Sixty-one and sixty-two are approved. So now we're on line sixty-three. This is a request from district court to convert a scanning technician position to a civil clerk two.
Yeah, and the next position is being frozen, so.
Correct. The next line, district court is freezing a scanning technician position, which is sixty thousand dollars' worth of savings.
Yeah, so they're really, yeah, it's a savings.
Line sixty-four.
Sixty-three and sixty-four are really kind of linked together, so there's a net savings of.
So which one is?
Well, if we approve the conversion, right, that adds thirty-three hundred. But that, but there's a scanning tech that is going to be frozen, and that reduces it by sixty thousand. So it's a fifty-seven thousand dollar savings between.
So you're?
Sixty-three and sixty, is that it? Sixty-three and sixty-four?
Yep.
Yes.
Sixty-three, sixty-four, and actually sixty-five. There's a request from district court to increase their overtime. So if you add those three together, it's a net savings of fifty-one thousand dollars.
Yeah, I'm fine to keep all three of those.
And Commissioners, we were trying to figure out efficiencies and cuts where we can make because we were trying to make room for that new judicial assistant that we have to have because of the new district court judge we're getting with the Edo Supreme Court. So that was some of the cuts we were trying to offer with things that we need to focus on and re-shift, particularly in civil, what we're doing right now.
Thanks.
Line sixty-six is a request, actually sixty-six through sixty-nine are requests from the elections department. Line sixty-six is a request to promote the elections manager. It's actually a savings based on the current election manager wage. And then they're going to freeze their election supervisor, and then reduce their temp seasonal budget, and reduce their overtime. So all of that together is a savings of a hundred and twelve thousand dollars, which goes towards offsetting the FTE requests up above for the elections director.
And just, I'd like to make a comment. Thank you. Thank you for looking at this this way and trying to find ways to reduce. It's not always easy, because you want to run an efficient operation. But it's a continuous process, so thank you.
So line sixty-six through sixty-nine, the election requests.
Yes, keep those.
The board's okay with those? Okay. All right. Line seventy is a request from the coroner to increase their on-call pay. Total loaded increase is ten thousand dollars.
So.
I think fine.
What were they at before? So they didn't have it in their budget before?
They did. They had it at a far lower amount. So right now, is it five thousand?
Because it was at the end of the year last year, so it was a partial year that was in the budget.
All right, that's fine. Keep it.
Okay. I'll mark that as keep for now. Line seventy-one is a request from the trial court administrator in district court to decrease their overtime by twelve thousand dollars. This helps offset their request on line seventy-two to convert their administrative secretary to the family court services specialist.
I'm fine.
You good with that, Mark?
I think so.
All right, so I'm going to mark those as approved, going to line seventy-three. This is a request from the prosecutor. The next three lines, so seventy-three, seventy-four, and seventy-five, are all requests from the prosecutor for career progression for three attorneys. They are going up into a different grade, and they are also getting additional steps in their pay matrix. And then line seventy-six, the prosecutor is freezing a part-time position to offset these career progression requests for total savings of eighty-seven thousand dollars.
Okay, I guess my question would be why the steps? Because the other requests have only been progression and not steps.
I'm going to let the prosecutor speak to that.
I don't have the matrix in front of me, but there's a lot of overlap on my AT positions. And so moving up a grade, just keeping the same step doesn't always mean there's an increase in pay.
It should, if you're moving an entire grade.
And I wish I would have brought my matrix in front of me.
That's okay. Why don't you and I circle up and?
Yeah, we can meet after this if you want. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to mark those as, I'm going to mark the three career progressions as hold for now. But the line seventy-six, a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars savings, I assume the board is okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Line seventy-seven is a request from the sheriff's office admin department to reclass the purchasing agent job from a grade five to a grade six.
I guess I'd just ask, is that purchasing agent going to be very familiar with procurement law?
I believe this was ran through HR.
Marsha Hegley for the record, yes, she is, and she has been doing this position for six years now. And she's taken on some additional responsibilities, and this has been run through human resources and reevaluated.
Sure, perfect. Thank you. I'm fine to keep that.
Mark?
Yep.
All right, I'll keep that one. Line seventy-eight is a request also from the sheriff's admin department. This is to lower the threshold for the longevity pay. Currently, longevity pay for patrol deputies, patrol sergeants, and then command staff starts at fifteen years. So this is to lower the threshold to ten years, so it'll be ten, fifteen, twenty. And then to include captains in the longevity pay, which they are not currently. And the total cost for that is eighty-seven thousand dollars.
So I think along with this can be handled in that other analysis that was put forward, that they're going to go meet with HR. So I would say keep for now, and we'll see how it shakes out with the additional information.
All right.
Do you have thoughts on that, Bruce?
There you go.
All right, we'll keep it for now.
No, you guys already decided it, so let's keep it on.
You could change my mind.
All right, line seventy-nine is a request from the treasurer's office. Seventy-nine, eighty, and eighty-one are three requests from the treasurer for career progression from treasury specialist three to treasury specialist supervisor, treasury specialist four, and then from treasury specialist two to three.
Do you want to add anything to that?
If you have questions, I'm here to answer. Jill Smith, Chief Deputy Treasurer for the record, where I can give you my little spiel.
Give us your spiel.
Okay. As a small office, it's imperative that team members are cross-trained in essential functions to ensure the continuity of operations as people retire or move on. We have, we previously didn't cross-train and experienced a vast loss of historical knowledge. Our request anticipates that individuals will not only gain proficiency in a broader range of tasks, but also master skills that carry greater responsibility, autonomy, and decision-making. This level of cross-training strengthens our ability to maintain seamless operations during absences or transitions. It fosters professional growth and supports a resilient, adaptable team capable of meeting evolving organizational needs. And we're trying to respect the request that we not bring in mid-year asks for career progression. And we're anticipating that in the next sixteen months, we'll see these things occur. And they are not funded, two of them are funded starting in March?
Yes, some of them are prorated. Let me look. One of them is prorated to start in March.
Are they, do you expect them to start in October, or what?
Two of them are likely. Two of them are likely to, and maybe it'll be December.
Okay.
But...
Well, look, building redundancy in the office, cross-training, is essential. You don't ever want to be in a situation where someone has that knowledge and it just disappears, to get hit by a bus or something, right?
Yeah, or I win the lottery.
Well, they, they might still be able to share some information.
But, you know, you look at some of the things we do, and, and there is a learning curve just to learning the tax and assessment system, but you look at things like the warrants of disstring and the tax deed process. It takes a full year to train someone to even barely understand the full tax deed process. The managing of estates as public administrator is incredibly complex. I mean, attorneys get paid hundreds of dollars of, an hour to, to do some of the things that we have our team members doing. And yes, it's, it's very important that we have more than one person ready to take the, the con.
Okay, you sold me.
Yay.
All right, so I'm going to mark this as approved, and that got us through all...
You good with that?
Yeah, it's correct. I mean, they, they should be doing that stuff for their office.
Bruce, I want to ask you a question. Over here on this, this line item was sheriff, and you said it's already been done, so would you, would you like to clarify that?
Oh, no, that was because both you and Commissioner Duncan agreed to keep it on.
Yes.
Yes, that's why. So, two out of the, two out of three make the decision. Third one doesn't really matter on that one. It's still a say yes today, decide tomorrow situation.
All right, so that wraps up all of the personnel requests. We, the board cut five hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars today, so we've made progress.
Did what?
So, the budget cuts that you made today, you cut five hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars from the budget. So, like I was saying, we made progress. What?
Half a million.
Yep, half a million, and so, we've made progress. We still have a ways to go. So, our next meeting, when is the next meeting arrow? June twenty-fifth? Our next meeting is going to be for OpEx, which is operating expenses. There's not usually a lot of cuts that end up happening in that meeting, so...
Well, it's over by a million this year, so...
That's almost all due to jail medical.
Oh, yeah.
So, I don't anticipate you being able to cut that.
Cut that much, okay.
So, just mentally prepare yourselves to come back and cut more personnel.
There's a finger being wagged.
Can, hold on, I want to get through this real quick. Can we also put on that agenda that we can revisit A and C?
Uh, yes, so we can revisit outstanding A and C items if we have time at the next meeting.
Perfect, thank you.
Assessor Kovacs?
Thank you, Commissioners. Assessor Kovacs for the record. I, I neglected to mention, and I believe it's in that PowerPoint or that spreadsheet that's in front of you, that I think you have electronically, as well as up on the screen, for all of our requests, all of our positions, including the ones that were theoretically cut or on hold, as well as the BIA conversion and so forth. If you look at the tab at the bottom, the Appraiser Promotions tab, that was information that we presented, I believe, at the end of May. It's been in the budget presentation, but it does explain what we're doing, as well as hierarchically, to be able to get the people on board and, and onboard them and train them. But we will come back nonetheless and provide more information, but I would encourage you to take a look at that Assessor Promotions tab. There's some information in there that explains it, as a narrative, as well as that.
Yeah, okay.
No, I'm looking at that, that spreadsheet there at the very bottom, it says Appraiser Promotions.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Any comments from either of you up here? Then that concludes our business item. Public comment? Come on down.
Ron Hartman for the record. I want to also state, this, our salary report that you are using, I don't have any confidence in it, and it goes further than what Commissioner Matarri pointed out when looking on the websites and seeing the discrepancy. An example, I don't think you can compare the position on just the title. For instance, I'll give you an example. All the plant managers at Ford that are plant managers running a plant don't get the same pay. They all have the same title, they don't get the same pay. Why don't they get the same pay? Because they don't have the same role, responsibility. Some plants are twice the size of other plants. So, one plant manager has twice the responsibility of another one, even though they have the same title. So, when this report was comparing to Spokane, Spokane's a city that's much larger than ours. I'm assuming those departments with the same title, regardless of which department it is, has a larger budget, more people, and more employees, and a larger responsibility of supervision. I don't think that's taken into account in this report that you guys paid for. I don't know how much it was, I forget, but I, I, this, I see a lot of flaws in this analysis, a lot of flaws. I would like to compliment the assessor's office on the report they gave the other day. That was outstanding. That's top-notch. I think it should be used as an example for the rest, to be honest. One other thing I'd like to comment on, the letting Hayden get away with not paying the full cost of this lieutenant in the car, that's unacceptable. You're putting the cost now on me and the rest of us in Cootney County to cover for this. And again, Commissioner Matarri's example of, they're setting the example for all the other ones that want to come in and ask for this particular one. If they don't want to pay the full amount, they don't get it. They just don't get it. I, I, I'm tired of, of being the subsidy. Same, I, you know, I'm going to use the, the one that I keep beating the drum on, which is transit, and this is just another example of that. And it's unacceptable to have the rest of us taxpayers subsidize another city, which is exactly what we're doing. And this is an expensive item, and I don't know if they answered if they're paying the full amount of the car either. Not just the salary of the, of the, of the lieutenant, but also the full amount of the car. And the deal, which I thought I heard saying that they're going to take five years to get the parity, that's, Trump wouldn't allow that in making the deal, I can tell you that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Public comment?
Commissioner Matarri? We have one public comment. Harry Craviato would like to know why the two departments are getting bonuses.
Okay, does he want to speak? Yeah, okay, well, okay, anybody else? All right, three fifty-five, meeting adjourned, thank you.